Okay.
All right, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, so, under Chairman's announcements, nothing other than to welcome Mike to his first official Board of Selectmen's meeting. So, after, this brings me into item number one. As we all know, usually we would do a reorganization after an election, but as our, I think we called it a constitutional crisis in Douglas. As we're still waiting on a recount because, leave it to Dave to complicate things.
I'm kind of dressed down tonight. One tie a week is enough.
One tie. So, once we manage to get that sorted out and figure out where the election really lands, then I think that would be the time to do a reorganization. Unless anybody disagrees.
No, I think it's probably worthy of a discussion as to what the next steps are, just for the townspeople to know how we're going to settle this.
Yep.
Either of the tied candidates might want a seat. Mike had 184 votes. Myself and Mr. Blatchett tied with 180 for the second seat, if anybody is unaware. There's going to be a recount. Either candidate can apply for a recount. I'm applying. Believe the other candidate.
The recount also includes, Mike.
It does include. That's a good point to make. Thank you for bringing that up. It includes all three candidates for two open seats. I can't speak for the other candidate. I believe he's going to request a recount, but I don't have any knowledge. I am in the process of gathering the signatures now. Once the recount is done, I will request a hand recount. At that point, if anything changes, then we have a winner, unless it changes to another tie. And I just can't imagine the odds against that happening, but I suppose it's possible.
It'd be a three-way count. It's an even number.
As we have shown, anything can happen.
Three people, even number.
If, if the recount gives us results, gives us a winner, then I think that's the end of the process, as I understand it. If the recount does not give us a winner, in any way, shape, manner, or form, if we stay tied as we are now, or as Mike just brought up, if we end up with a different kind of tie involving different people. As I understand it, and I'm not quoting law here, just what I was told, the selectmen would have two choices. Number one would be to clear the seat vacant until the next election, and number two would be to order a special election. And finishing up on that, any citizen in the town after this recount can gather 200 signatures and come in and petition, I think that's the right word, petition the selectmen to hold a special election. I think, Matt, have I missed anything there?
I think you got it all.
Okay, thank you.
So, at that point, not that I think it'll happen, but if two other people wanted to get into that special election, it's as if it was May again?
I don't believe so, but I may be making an assumption.
It'd be the same three candidates.
I think it's, my understanding of reading the guidance from the Secretary of State's office, it would be the same three candidates. And I thank Mike for pointing out what I kind of skipped over, that the recount covers all three of us, not just the two that are tied.
Yeah, but to Mike's point, if the recount declares you and the other candidate as a tie, Mike's still.
If he still has the majority of the votes, I would. Absolutely, if he still has the majority, he stays.
Yeah, so the special election would then just come down to the two people in a tie.
Exactly, yep. That's my understanding, from speaking of various people.
The only thing I'm a little doubt is whether you can borrow other people from running, or if they ever looked at the statute.
I think it would be limited just to two people that were tied.
I keep quote statute, but my understanding of a special election would be just the people that are tied.
That's how I understood it from the town clerk.
All right. Any other discussion in there?
So, everybody.
Our chairman continues in office, I think, until, till deposed.
He's right here.
All righty. Brings us to our next agenda item, which is ZNT Inc., Teresa Madison, review local retail cannabis license application and possible votes. And Teresa's here. You can come up.
I can hear you better up here, Teresa. It's kind of hard to hear. Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to run and get my book.
How long, gentlemen?
Good, how are you?
It's been one year and five months, exactly since the first time I met you. December 19th, December 1st, 2019.
Time flies.
Crazy, the speed of the organization.
No, actually, actually, it's actually a short time if you think about the whole pandemic.
Yeah.
How fast we got this started, the pandemic.
Yeah.
It's actually very good timing, if anything.
Good to hear. The building looks good, so.
The building is amazing.
I haven't seen inside, but the outside looks nice.
You're more than welcome to come and see the inside anytime that you want. It's been a lot of work. He's outside in car because he has a headache. Working the way out the last couple of days. You remember, we've been inside for seven days.
Yeah.
In the liquor store. Now, we're outside every day, working the way.
That will cause a headache.
Yeah.
All right, so, what we have here? We have the business certificate.
The first thing that stuck out to me was, the entity name is ZNT, but the sign outside says Capital Cannabis.
We did a DBA. We have a business certificate signed in your packet for a DBA. Actually had patented and trademarked. It's Capital Cannabis Community Dispenser, right? And we were asked by our consultant and our marketing for the whole, what we're doing to actually, because of what we did with Capital Liquors, customer service, product, everything else, they said, why wouldn't we just do the same thing here? It made perfect sense, because we were going in a different direction.
If it's not broken, don't fix it, right?
That's right. So, that's why we said Capital Cannabis Community Dispenser.
All right, and I'm looking down through this. This is for the CCC license. Says Workman's Comp Insurance and State WC affidavit due Friday?
The Workman's Comp, you do have the certificate of liability in hand. It's just, we're just waiting for a policy number, and that should be here this week.
Okay.
It's already paid for, it's already in force, we just need the policy number.
Okay.
And the insurance company, our insurance company, Barton Insurance, said that as soon as he has that this week, he's going to forward it to his man of all. So, his finger is on the pulse of that, along with the CCC, if you see in your packet. We do have a final license that we already paid for. We just have to go through the formality of the 17th of June. So, as soon as we have that, that will, the day that we go into the hearing, they'll send us a letter that day, and we'll send that letter over to them.
Okay.
Everything else has been satisfied. We actually have a plumbing signed off on. Full plumbing was done today. The electrician is coming in Thursday, and we're heading for our certificate of occupancy for the 27th.
And fire inspection, is that so?
He'll be there on the 27th.
Okay.
That's when he'll sign off on that. So, actually, what I'm looking for is an approval with a condition that before final sign off, I will hand you the letter from the CCC. You'll have the policy number this week, and the fire chief will be signing off with the CO on Thursday, 27th.
I saw the fire chief looking for keys to the panel there in the box. Is that all set?
Yep, that's what, that will be, not only are we putting a knox box in, but we also put an extra feed directly to the fire department.
Okay.
They have an extra feed, and the police department will have feed, a direct feed from all our cameras outside.
Let's make them happy.
With a license recognition camera.
Really?
Really?
Yes.
See some complaints about that, but not from me.
It's only if there's an issue. That's the only thing in this. It's only if there's an issue.
The ounce of prevention versus a pound of cure.
I'm on your side.
You saw the big generator, right? We'll, we'll be feeding the town, okay?
That's on tape.
Yeah. Running a line.
We still have enough load there, it's not going to be a good generator for long.
Plug it in. Because by, by CC rules, the cameras have to be up and running 24/7, no matter what.
Yeah.
Our engineer went a little overkill and did the entire building, so it'll probably end up being a fallout shelter. We're laughing at Mr. Fringe today a little bit.
So, bomb-rated doors, the whole nine yards. It's all good.
Well, you've certainly done a lot of work on this.
Yes.
I still say we just run a big extension cord down there for our servant room.
You guys, you guys left Cranston to live in North Providence?
North Providence, yes.
I think it's a felony in Rhode Island to do that. So, you're one of Charlie Lombardi's constituents now?
Oh, yeah, a little story about that one.
So, you gotta have, there has to be bubbly beverages when you talk about Charlie.
Yeah, we had, when we, when we left the store, it was, it was time to leave the area and just concentrate here, and.
You'll be a lot closer, you're about 146.
We're literally less than 20 minutes away. We just jumped on 146 straight away. So, now.
Yeah, I don't see any issues. I'd entertain a motion if somebody cares to make one.
Got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Place looks good, by the way.
Thanks.
Got off of that.
Thank you.
You said you're going to be open, finalize on the 27th.
CEO.
The fire department's coming on the 27th. Do you have to get anything from the planning board?
The planning board, everything on the outside is under conditions, and it was, I was before the planning board last, let's say, Tuesday, last Thursday, and I asked for a modification to my parking lot, because I had, I asked if I could do just binder with all the lineage and make it look like it's a finished product, because there has been so much movement over there, as you know, storm drains.
No, then all that makes sense, it's just, last year, when you were going through this whole process with the planning board, I remember seeing that they had, there was a big discussion about lumen seed and being done before the end of the, the win through and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
All that's been a process.
Yep, we have, I, like I said, we went before the planning board on Thursday, and Jake is actually the one that's going to be doing the signing off on all the conditions. So, I can't get anybody in there. In fact, I just had my landscaper up today to look at the property.
I don't have a problem with it, I'm just asking.
We're not going to have him touch anything until everybody's off the property. Tomorrow, they're still, we're going to set the tents, and they're going to hook up the propane, they're going to do all the lineage tomorrow. So, when the parking, parking lot is empty and there's no more of the big trucks.
Right.
My, my landscaper is going to come up, and we already have great ideas, I'm just going to do like the low, those low bushes with the low vining flowers. I don't want grass, grass is too much, okay? But just.
You already get it inside.
I was going to say, can I quote you, the grass is too much?
That's right.
No, it's too much to handle, you know? My breath has a little color.
Nice point, nice point there.
Oh, grass, oh, God, blond.
That might be before your era.
That's my 10% margin of error.
Before it became medicine.
No, there's weed and there's grass, okay? And there's cannabis.
Good point. As long as you're selling doobies, we'll be all set.
So, we all, yeah, we're all set with that, okay?
Yeah, that's all. I was just listening to your timing, just making sure that you addressed those other ones, too, like, you sound.
The biggest thing that we had to get through was yesterday. Yesterday was a huge day, to get a trench dog, to get a pipeline in there, to get the paving in there, because I'm working with people that have, that have big companies, and they're booking so far out. So, they said, Teresa, we'll squeeze you in on this deck, doing me a favor, so I have to make sure everything's ready for that. So, I, in a moment's notice, I had to mobilize back home to dig 120 foot.
Welcome to construction.
I know.
I, I think it makes sense to use binder until all the big construction vehicles are out of there.
Yeah, because who knows what's going to happen.
You're going to wind up with a parking lot that looks like this.
Yes, and I have a guarantee from Port Shaw that on September 1st, they'll come back in, fix whatever needs to be fixed, put the top coat, re-line, and start all over again.
That works.
Yep.
What are we actually, what are we actually approving, the final?
Your first, your first license.
It's our first cannabis license, okay.
With the contingency as well.
Yeah.
With that, with the condition, with approval, with the condition that I will submit the CO with the fire chief, the policy number this week, and on the 17th, the CCC.
So, moved?
Seconded.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Music to my ears.
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just want to say how refreshing it is to be able to just do the all those in favor again, now that we're not doing the remote stuff.
We were over roll call, I think.
We had to. You were required to do a roll call vote.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's the planning, it's different, too, everybody.
It's you remote, yeah, if anyone's remote.
Right, thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome to come down anytime and take a peek.
Yeah.
Have a great night, thanks.
Take care.
Okay, and next is.
I think Eric from, for the race was going to Avaya Inn.
Was going to Avaya Inn?
Yeah.
I'm picking Avaya Inn, to high technical skills. Thank you.
It's actually quite simple to use. Most problems that we have with Avaya spaces tend to go towards the end user, Mr. Cortez. Yeah, I'm just saying. You know, our slogan is like, the power of we.
Put another V in there.
The royal we.
It's like that, isn't it?
So, this is the Rev. 3 New England Triathlon?
Indeed.
Is Tim running in this?
Not.
We did sign you up.
That's good. Do I get a T-shirt?
You do get a T-shirt, and Mr. Fitzpatrick's going to run with you.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
He's going to run for me.
Oh. He said he was going to do a runoff at the election.
Oh.
I, I just requested that they keep it under 50 yards.
So, they may have given up, I mean, it's 26 minutes and we're the only ones up.
All right.
I don't need the jokes right themselves.
Don't say that. I don't pick on lawyers, do I?
You do all the time.
All right. Well, then.
Well, one of the first things I look at when one of these comes before us is to look at our public safety officers and what they think about the event.
No concerns.
Him noted that Chief Miglianico would like, or thinks they will probably need a detail officer on Southwest Main Street. I don't recall whether we required that with this particular event.
I think we did. Not 100% certain.
Yeah, their previous application with us included a detail.
I think they volunteered it.
Yeah, in following.
There is a point where they're going to have a fair number of people crossing the road.
We don't.
Is it down in South, Southwest?
We don't do a stamp.
Yeah, Southwest and Cedar.
Right?
I don't think so.
I don't think we do.
So.
I would make a motion that we approve the application with the caveat that they provide, they provide one detail officer as set forth.
Seconded.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Good. Next is to review the annual appointments. Yes, how unfortunate that everyone is here. This is one of our favorite times, when whoever happens to be vacant gets thrown onto all kinds of committees that they never wish to be proud of.
All right. I am staring at the Central Mass Regional Planning Rep position and looking at a new face on our board. Be prepared for that, Mike.
But if you, if you take note, the first category has that, that face up there, the third one has that face up there, and I can probably find it in a couple other spots up, but I don't know, I think I only see Mr. Bonin on one spot.
We're going to do this.
No, no. Just trying to look through it and pay attention and be observant.
It's sort of, I think of it as like, Mike, an initiation.
So, everybody that comes on to the board does, you know, serve a term.
On CMRPC.
CMRPC. Tim has become, I mean, he's served a number of terms.
No, no, not, I've noticed that he's always on it, so he'll be a good resource when I have.
He's now the regional expert, but we really do need a backup for him.
There is tremendous institutional knowledge in him when he comes to CMRPC.
So, just be aware, that may come your way. The dance begins.
That's all right.
All right, so, Mike, you're on Building and Facility Construction Committee. Do you want to stay on that?
Yeah, that is a town moderator's appointment. What I want to do is, it's coming up for reappointment, and I would prefer not to start something I'm not going to finish. So, I'm going to, I have a meeting with them tomorrow night, and if it's all right with the members of this board, I would like to participate in with them only as they need me, to help them through, just for information for projects and stuff, not be a voting member or anything, just to help them make it. They have a new member now, Fred Fontaine, it'll help them with their transition.
We can hold, and in the past, we've held some of these appointments for good cause, and I think, you know, Mike's status right now is probably for good cause.
Yep.
But it sounds like you don't really want to be a member, you just want to participate.
I don't want to be a full-time member. Once, once they can take it over and I'm no longer needed, I, I do have a job outside of this stuff, so.
Really?
Yeah. And it's not selling peeps either.
Okay. Consuming them, maybe.
But if that's all right with everybody else, I would be happy to help them through that process, but I've held off on notifying Keith about my interest in reappointment, and I'd rather bring it up with that committee as well tomorrow.
And you want to retain your slot on Capital Improvement?
Stay on Capital, that, that only meets typically in the fall. Again, for the same reason, just to help the process through. No issue with that. So, we can get some more members on that, we're kind of scratching our heads at the time we have a meeting, if we have a quorum.
We'll put a, Tim, we're going to put a hold on the CMRPC appointment.
Thank you.
And Matt's a big part of Capital, too. I'd like to, his input on that, to see if he agrees with that, or.
No, I think we're going to need some stability. Notice that the Highway Superintendent does not wish to be reappointed. So, we'll have two vacancies for department heads. It's a, it's a body that works best if the people that serve on it have knowledge of things, how things are built, and, and how vehicles are priced, and all this expensive stuff. So, I would hope that we could reach out to a couple of department heads and, you know, get somebody who's, doesn't have to be a department head, I think the bylaws is going to be a designate, but it needs to be somebody with a good head on their shoulders for this material. Meetings are just a lot more efficient if there's knowledge, a knowledge base.
Be curious if Ernie Marx might be interested in stepping up to represent Highway.
Maybe he could, we can ask around. I have to check the bylaw. I just want to remind everyone that this is a creature of a bylaw. So, the people who crafted the bylaw anticipated that they wanted department heads. It's not a conflict of interest for department heads to be on it, the bylaw calls for them. And at one time, I thought there was a chain here back to, to town meeting via the Finance Committee, there isn't. Capital Committee is a creature of the Board of Selectmen, and it works for you and with you in crafting the capital budget. And because you are, it makes sense, you are the caretakers of the assets of the town, so.
And it's usually our budget that's presented to town meeting.
So, there really isn't, it's a little bit weird that the people you would ask, the people are going to be on the committee anyway. You're still going to ask John Furno questions about.
So, would that be an issue for me to be on that as well as us?
No, I mean, you might as well run headlong at that. I mean, you did call ethics and got.
Yeah.
Clearances. So, it's, it's different when you're on the board and you're asked to be appointed to something else. That's a no-no. If you're already on the boards, and then you get elected to the Select Board, Select Board is a special employee, you can hold multiple.
Plus, it's an advisory board, too, not a.
Yeah. Yeah, this, the access to the warrant for the Capital Improvement Committee is through you. So, we just got to find some people willing to serve, because it, it's a little bit complicated as, is this nine? This is nine. So, you got to get five people to attend a meeting, to have a meeting.
And we're just reviewing this, we don't have to take any action on it tonight, so.
Regional planning looks perfectly adequate. They serve wicked good sandwiches out there.
They do?
You haven't got one?
I've missed those.
I'm going, well, I'm going to rewind the security tape, was that you, or is it?
No need. Well, it isn't carding, there are a number of people that are up that have already indicated they are interested in continuing their service, so that's great.
Yeah, I don't have any, if people are currently serving on the board, there's been no issues with them, and they wish to continue to serve, I'm not inclined to make any changes.
Nope. When does this become actionable? Early July?
Yeah. So, we'll put it on like a late June agenda to make our final decisions on it.
Mr. Chairman, just as another point of reference, I'm on the last page, too.
All right, you populate.
Just, just to help Tim with this.
Just to wrap my head around.
Do you want to stay on the DBA, too?
Tim, he's sitting right in fine, isn't he?
That ends on 2023, so. Again, for the same reason, we need some more help on there, so if people come forward and want to take over those slots, I'm more than happy to pass them along, but.
Try and get a recruiting effort.
I don't want to hurt any of those board committees by just jumping off because I started something else.
That's fair.
I know the caption said annual appointments, Mr. Chairman, but there are some here that are more than a year.
Yeah, there's some on three, three-year terms and.
Another thing I don't understand is town council. I thought that was something I had to do every year, not three.
I thought that was annual.
It is.
Well, yeah, and it's indicated there. Terms are up in '20 to '21.
No, but see over on the right-hand side?
Yeah, term, 2024.
Uh-huh, look at that.
I don't think that's true.
Yeah, I thought those are annual.
Whoa, it says it right there, appointed one year in parentheses.
Yeah.
All right, so it's just a typo on the term ending.
But zoning is definitely three years.
Correct.
Not a typo on our agendas.
I see Worcester Regional Transit, sorry, we don't have any service from them in the town.
No.
But we're theoretically members, the town is included in the.
I have spent less than eight nanoseconds in three and a half years working for you about the Worcester Regional Transportation.
So, you don't consider yourself pulling first?
I think a bus ran me off the road sometime, over near Kelly Square or something. That's the only time I've ever noticed.
Well, they have a new road arena, I'm going to say.
Now, we can get the big bus to go by Orange Street, I mean, it might be, it might be a challenge.
With potholes?
I've seen more pigs on Main Street than I have Worcester buses.
There are more pigs on Main Street than there are buses, absolutely.
It's true. It's true.
All right, is there anything else to go over with that? We feel comfortable with the appointments list other than a potential typo that Lisa will look into?
This is a big one, number five.
Number five, which is very exciting to even read it on the agenda. Ending the state of emergency and reopening town buildings and possible votes.
So you know the governor wants to go May 29th, which is what he's announced, which is not a really big deal for us except in one location, which is the Senior Center, Adult Social Center. So we're in the middle of finishing up the flooring project, but then there is the issue of some places still have a mask mandate regardless of the lifting of the state of emergency, whether or not we want to have a policy in this town about that.
When you say some places, are you referring to public or private entries?
So I believe that schools still have masks and there may be a couple of other public gatherings where.
Is that in the governor's decision or individual schools? I believe so too, I'm just making.
And it's what DESE passed down too, that they can remove the mask for outdoors and sporting activities.
Recession.
And recess, but indoors they're still required.
So the challenge here is that not everybody may have wanted to be vaccinated, but may still want to use the Adult Social Center. You know, is that going to do, should we put out a policy to be consistent? So the director was asking me that today and I don't have a ready answer.
She's still waiting for, she's still waiting for some guidance on that too, because they don't.
So the state provided none, that's actually made it more difficult to figure out what they want to do here.
When you talk of a policy, do you mean a policy on wearing masks?
I think it would be the most we could do. If you're going to be open to the public, then you really can't, I don't want to be in the business of screening people.
No, I don't, I think that creates a mountain of trouble for the town.
I think with asking people to wear a mask out of respect for each other might be the best we can do. If somebody is visibly not well, that, I think that's where we, we don't really have a policy of just asking people to leave if they're not well. But we have to be cognizant of the fact that some people are very sensitive to this and a lot of elders did pass away from this, so they don't want to get sick with it. And again, we have so much information about people because we arranged their vaccinations, right? We basically called every single person. So, you know, we really do know who got a shot and didn't because they told us.
Is it possible if we opt to move forward with raising, like staying in accordance with where the governor's at and we opt to say we're going to lift the state of emergency on the 29th and reopen all public buildings, can we put, with the exception of the Senior Center? You know, until we get a little bit better understanding or clarity as to how that's going to work.
We have authority thing to do to separate that building from the.
You do once I mean once thing.
Yeah. I think that makes sense to do that.
And it's not to upset the seniors because I know that they're chomping at the bit to get back in there, but, you know, I'd rather err on the side of caution.
It's our most vulnerable population and then most likely.
Maybe the thing to do is to kick this over to the Board of Health for the next meeting and ask them to offer up their thoughts on it, what they want to do and.
Do we know what the new federal guidance is on mask wearing?
I haven't read it, I read the headlines, CDC said no more masks.
Yeah.
It gets into saying that they're going to adopt a new federal guidance on mask wearing, whatever that may be, so.
Should we go ahead and maybe open the town hall and then?
Yeah, I think we should.
Police too and fire.
We should talk to the chiefs, I think.
We'll talk to the chiefs, I see no reason not to.
It's not like people wander the halls of either one of the departments anyway. They come in and deal with the dispatcher at the front, well, the fire department's a little trickier.
Fire department's trickier, the police department has some security measures that are.
There's no room for wandering the public area or the.
There's no wandering in the police department.
Can wander four or five steps and that's it.
What we could do is just hold off on the, on fire in the Senior Center and then open the rest of it up on May 29th.
I mean, I'd like to hear what Ken has to say.
So let's get the Board of Health and Ken to tell us what they want to do.
I think the most important place is the town hall and that.
A lot of people have asked, so I really kind of want to open the doors.
Are we going to do this immediately or wait till the 29th?
Well, I was thinking we'd wait till July 1st, but if we, because that's the new fiscal year, but that's just an artificial deadline. It was before, I circulated that date before the governor made his announcement. So we should be in accordance. No, I was behind, I had a later date, but he should, if we're going to do it, let's just do it when the governor does it so people are not confused or upset. There are definitely people who prefer to pay their taxes, get a receipt, watch the person walk away with their check. That's fair and, or to get a dog license or whatever last minute. We really just want to be open again.
Employees here are comfortable with us reopening?
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if, if the work is getting done, they can work from home if they're sensitive, you know, if they're in a population. We really never stopped, you know, and we've had a couple of people at work remotely, but really we've always been here.
Yeah.
Running right outside to process whatever somebody put in the box, so I don't think it's going to change much. Couple of people who might be more reticent to come back to work are setting up their retirement anyway, so they're either going to be working from home or coming in to train their replacement, so, you know, there's a limited timeframe for that too, not really.
And there's still the Plexiglas shields up for.
We got, we'll leave the shields on, unless the employees all decide in one office that they want them down, but I don't think, I don't see that happening, it'll be up.
What about our implementation of the Civil Defense Act of 1954?
So that's only valid while the act has been invoked through a declaration of emergency. So we haven't, we haven't used that authority really since, since we ended the food program.
Early on, right?
So almost a year ago.
Yes, I remember it states that when the state of emergency ends, that authority ends as well.
Okay, so we don't have to rescind that, the governor will do that for us?
No, I think, no, that's a local thing, so.
It's when we cancel our state of emergency.
Oh, our state of emergency?
Yeah.
We're close, but not there yet.
I mean, you can decide tonight if you choose to, to set a date.
I'd be inclined to follow the governor, with the exception of fire in the Senior Center.
When is the governor's?
29th.
29th.
May 29th.
It's a Saturday.
I know that's when the mask end date is, I thought the state of emergency was later than that.
It was all in one shot, that he'd moved everything up, that's what me.
That's what I thought.
June 15th?
Thank you, yeah. His, the state's state of emergency ends on June 15th.
So I should end with it, I think.
We could talk about an earlier date, 27th. When you passed your declaration, you did say that you would end when the governor ended. I'm almost positive that that's what you said.
To avoid confusion, I think we should have them both the same.
Exactly, and then the other thing would be your authorization of remote meetings was contingent on the state of emergency. We do need a couple of weeks to get the word out to all of our chairs that they will not be able to do remote participation unless you decide as a board that you want it to continue.
How has it been?
If you're asking my opinion, I think it's really, really good if you have external witnesses, especially if they're on the clock. So you've got an applicant in front of the planning board, planning board docket is full, 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 right? They're going to pay their lawyer and their engineer to sit here and wait for the board to get through their work. They may have three, four, five billable hours on that. If you're remote, you're still getting the value of the testimony, you're still having an interaction with them, but they may or may not have to bill all that time. That would be one reason to keep it for non-members.
Is the remote participation tied in with the emergency or is it separate?
You guys definitely tie that together.
Together.
I remember that for sure. And then there was some authorizations from the governor himself about open meetings and.
I think we might want to keep that open for particularly people that have scheduled meetings already coming up in the next couple of weeks rather than to.
That their last one would be, then their next one would be their last one, they can announce it from their own chairs.
I think if we are going to stick with the remote policy and I'm certainly not jockeying for whatever platform it is, but we pick a single platform that we send out for these meetings, you know, be it Zoom or if we're going to use Spaces or whatever it is and have that all across the municipality. And like I said, I'm agnostic, it doesn't matter to me, I've used both, even if it's Teams.
I, it serves its purpose. I think there's a certain level of deliberation that might get lost in a, in a, I'll call it a Zoom meeting. I also think it's good to be able to see everyone's face and their interactions and then how they're digesting things and how they came to their conclusions, so I'm inclined, when the time is right, to require that we meet in person again.
My thought is, is that the board should meet in person. Like the voting members that are sitting on the board should all be sitting in the same room. But I do like the idea of residents' remote participation that way because we are getting a lot more depth and breadth into who's actually watching and participating in the meetings.
Yeah, it might be all in or all out.
I'm with Tim and, you know, this, part of this comes from my employment and going to court and everything like that. While most participation served the purpose at the height of the pandemic, I kind of think it's been used and abused and pushed beyond what's intended. And I take your comments, Tim, about, you know, being able to be in the same room with someone and, you know, read the body and bush and all the rest of that, and I take that one step higher. I know it would be more convenient for some witnesses, particularly if they weren't being paid, to be available, but, you know, if you have a planning board meeting that starts at seven and you're the third person on, that person still has to sit by his computer screen and wait to be called, so I'm not really sure if that's any better. I'm a technology guy to a point, but I like being in the same room with people and talking to people, so. I, I think Tim's end statement, which I read is let's get rid of this as soon as we can, if that's something I'd give.
On the other hand, if you get somebody homesick or there's a blizzard or something like that, you can gain maybe extra participation.
I think that may be an isolated situation. As far as the, I don't know what typically happens here, obviously, but with the zoning board, it's difficult to try to work off remote people, whether it's a member or an applicant or whatever, they, they can't see what you have. Somebody brings in a set of plans, oh, I can't see that. Well, unless you have screen share and it's set up that way, they're not going to be accurately see what's going on with the meeting. I would, I would be inclined to think that you would extend that 30 days past the lifting of the state of emergency. It gives everybody an opportunity to get notice, get on this, because you're not going to have anything that's put out past 30 days for meetings from that point. Basically, they're going to give you about five weeks. And the other thing is people that are participating in the meetings, they could be in Africa and they're calling the shots for a town that they're not even here or participating in that, then that would be a concern.
Well, I mean, again, it's.
It's just thoughts, that's all.
No, it's fair, and I mean, some of the concerns regarding participation, it depends on the platform that you're sitting on. You can restrict as to who it goes out to, who can get into the meeting, who can't. A lot of the different platforms now are offering different layers of security to ensure that those people are there. I'm kind of sitting on the, in the middle of it, like to the point of I like being in a room, having the whole board around us, we can read each other's body language and understand some of the intent that sits behind it. I am a technologist and when you look into it, like if the tool is used properly, where people are trained on it and say, okay, like case in point, planning board, and you have somebody that's there that's actually a planner or your town engineer that says, okay, I'm looking at these plot plans and these drawings, they can have those up at moments noticed where everybody can see them. You know, and the way we're set up here where it sits up on that YHTB and that's also what's being shared with the people at home, it's pretty easy and accessible as long as you're savvy with it.
Pretty easy and accessible if the system is up to that point. Zoning isn't up to that point. Sometimes we don't even get our agenda when they set a plan that's not remote and I'm just.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's.
Calling it for what it is. And it's very difficult and it's not fair to the applicant or the board to, to struggle through it or have delays or whatever the case may be. That's why I made a recommendation to Matt about two months ago about having the building commissioner review all the applications before they even come to us. That way they're not coming with the wrong, wrong stuff and incomplete and everything else, so.
I can feel your pain because I believe I had to sit on a couple of the zoning and planning board meetings and operate the camera and it was, it's painful.
Yeah.
You know, and one of those, it's, I, and I'm certainly not trying to pick on any of our boards. I think some of the pain that comes from that is you guys weren't getting your complete packets or you didn't have everything ready in a timely manner. That's not the technology's fault, you know.
Not the tech, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It has not been, I'm not saying that your, your idea or motivation is a bad thing. We just not, we don't have the, the feed to go into the machine and to come out and get good results. It's kind of premature until we get that other stuff up. Matt's in the process of doing, he's got the building department pretty much straight now and he's, he's talking about zoning and planning and whatnot. Once that's up and running, it, it'll, it's a lot easier to pull it up on the screen, but until then.
Yeah, it's a struggle.
It's, it's difficult and it's just not fair to the applicants and it's very frustrating for the board members.
No, that's fair.
Maybe Matt does a little more talking with the other boards or staff and see if the feeling's stronger.
Because we'd have time to change a decision on that between now and when we actually left it.
We have two more meetings.
We're talking about lifting the mask.
I think you have to give the boards 30-day notice and let it, yeah, to get the.
Phase it out.
Everybody on the right, whenever you get the notice from.
That's fair.
So we have a consensus there on the 20, 29th is the key date for opening the town hall and not fire and it's not, not Senior Center?
Or did we want to push everything to the reopen being in conjunction with the lift of the state of emergency, which was in June?
You know, I think Matt's point is well taken, we're going to confuse the hell out of people, I think. If we have a separate date from what the state has for opening, so on reflection even on the budget issue, I probably ought to stay with 29th.
You, you do have a description in there about face covering then here, so if you're in a.
And I would assume that the Senior Center may fall under that, those categories as far as the face covering.
How about the, are we taking action in respect to private businesses and town wearing masks? Is that all state?
Yeah, the state has really occupied the field with a lot of that stuff. And I know restaurant owners have made inquiries to us about what the guidance has been.
Because I know Boston or Cambridge may be doing something different.
We've referred them all to the DOH's, you know, latest guidance and all of it. They have, they've chosen not to explicitly address some things that you would think would be obvious. They're just so anxious to go out and tell us all. To me, it's six and one half dozen of the other, you don't have to do it all at the same time, that's kind of why we're having this discussion. Opening the town halls to the public to transact their business can happen tomorrow or it can wait till the 29th. The 15th, in terms of gatherings here for purposes of meetings, we can be somewhat more deliberate and we should be more deliberate and make sure all the board and committee members are comfortable with it.
So maybe I'll, I'll move that we open the town hall on the 29th of May. And how about anything on masks in general in the town meeting?
It says, it's actually under the face coverings in here. People must still wear face coverings on public and private transportation systems, which is ride chairs, tax, ferries, MBTA, commuter rail, in healthcare facilities and other settings hosting vulnerable populations.
And that's what I picked up on when I saw that statement.
So we'll take some, a little bit of extra time to just educate people. So we'll push it on the Facebook pages for police and fire, emergency management, the town website, that Adult Social Center, we request that people wear our masks.
Okay.
So have a mo, I made a motion.
I will second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll make a. And then we'll make a, talk about the state of emergency lifting in a later day.
Yeah.
It's been a hell of a ride, fellas, right? That's kind of a neat-
Sure has.
All right. Brings us to approved minutes and possible votes.
Move that we approve the meeting minutes of May 4th, 2021.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Move that we approve the executive session minutes, the executive session of that same date, May 4th, and retain them.
I would second those minutes for that motion.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
You'll see the next item on the agenda, just mentioned briefly that the town meeting did ratify both the police and fire union contracts, so please do sign before leaving. It was a pleasure working with both unions, so I'm glad to see this process concluded. The board will have a very big decision to make, and I think, I'd like to set it for June 1st, so there's only so much time. Late this afternoon, we got what we've been waiting for, for a long time, which is a second set of quotes on our property and casualty insurance and all the lines that go into that line item in the budget. And so it's a weighty decision. So the town has been a member of MIAA for a very long time. As you know, MIAA is a creature of the MMA, and has pulled together many, the vast overwhelming majority of the cities and towns of Massachusetts, to a property casualty insurance pool and purchase insurance. It's locally administered by CABA Risk. And they help us with risk management through training and, in some cases, direct grants. So when we had large claim at the school regarding, you know, frozen pipe, they andied up and basically provided us with a whole suite of sensors and other things that would have cost us a fair amount of money. So there's that, that customer service, that touch, that familiarity. We know who we talk to, whenever we have a specific kind of claim, we get answers, and it's a good relationship. The alternative offers that were gathered by a different broker, the same broker that manages the health insurance group, has the benefit of not only being about 9% less, but the coverages are enhanced. Now, I only got this at 4:00. It's 8:00 now, so I haven't obviously read it. So I would like the opportunity to, along with Gene, we're going to be on a phone tomorrow, a phone call, and get an explanation from this other set of bids. Just to remind everybody, though, this isn't monolithic, right? So it just happens that we place most of our lines with MIAA, and the IOD piece is provided by Chubb, which is a well-known insurer in that area. But within the MIAA set of coverages, there's a whole bunch of lines, right? There's professional liability lines, there's property and casualty, which is the big driver, there's workers' comp, and there are other pieces that all go into that relationship that the alternative broker Gallagher has determined, they bid them out individually and then managed our deductible strategy to try to get to a more manageable, you know, a more financially stable situation. You know, first and foremost, we're already on a path for higher premiums, and we had this big claim down here. Full disclosure, that coverage is capped, a half a million dollars. We're approaching that cap. Anything above $500,000 is going to be on the town to pay out.
Unless we recover elsewhere.
Unless we were able to subrogate the claim and recover elsewhere, so, which I'm still hoping is a viable-
I think it's viable, yeah.
So that's a big piece of it. So I'll be putting together a packet and circulating it to you. Insurance is not bid out. It's exempt from chapter 30B, so it is something that you are able to review without. So this is the first time, I don't, I don't know that Town Douglas has ever bid this out before. I haven't been able to find any record of it.
I think we probably think there's safety in numbers, being little Town Douglas, MIAA trusted entity, we probably just rolled with it. I think there's another pros and cons for-
One of the things we've learned, and I've learned this in two states now, is that a lot of times, these municipal gatherings are repackaging an underlying planned design that's offered by a national carrier. So what we've done here, pretty much, is we've gone directly through that broke up Gallagher to the national carrier-
Yeah.
And had them bid the business without the overhead or other things that may get added. So it's very interesting, it's, but it's a long read, so I'll get you everything.
So would it say that idea carries more weight, given our problems downstairs? Like, we're one together?
I'm not sure. I want to read what they've sent us. The one thing about these state entities is they're, it's all, we're a national account because we're big enough, but it's not like we're being managed as a national account. This is one of the things that I always find. You really get a watch the ball, because it's so hard to figure out what's exactly what they're doing to you, because they rate you on your experience. They'll quote out premiums, or maybe they're getting the coverage for a certain price and then covering their own rear ends with their own underwriting. I'm not entirely sure exactly how this works. So I'll get these answers for you, and I'll work out with the broker and try to. If you have questions, though, that you specifically want answered, as we go along, it would be helpful if we had them, we were able to ask them.
I guess my question on it would be, are they going to be pricing us out at the same risk level MIAA has?
Right.
Because if they put us as a lower risk, then are we really saving ourselves anything, considering our claim record?
There's no way to save money where we are right now without increasing our deductibles. When we did the budget, we included covering the deductible as part of the budget request for that line item. So if the decision of the board is to go with a plan with a higher deductible, I'm talking only about property right now, the money is in the budget to cover the deductible.
Once?
Once.
Just one time?
Yeah.
So if you end up with a repeat issue?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bad luck, get boom.
And things coming through.
Four fives.
But a 9% difference covers four claims that surpass the deductible. That was the play. What else is going on? We're still working. The town is still represented through my office on the teachers' negotiation, and that's taken up an awful lot of my time, so I'm not really at liberty to go into all the details on that, but that's, that's a lot of what we've been doing for the rest of the time. Are there any questions about anything going on in town that anybody wants? I know that, I don't follow Facebook because I probably, I don't have much hair left. I kind of want to keep it, so I won't. But, you know, at the, the base of every agitated public conversation, there's an important core issue, right, that needs to be addressed and met head-on, and I know that paving is important for folks in town, and that's why we did the pavement management study, was to come into compliance with the state's request that we have a priority list and that as we get chapter 90 funds and local funds together, or any grant money that we get, that we're picking off targets that have been logically arrived at. The fly in the ointment in Douglas, and I think this happens in other towns too, that have a similar aging infrastructure, is that just one bridge, one culvert, for God's sake, can wipe your chapter 90 out for two years. So our chapter 90 is 360. Fixing a typical bridge is half a million, and made more complicated by the fact that the age of some of the culverts and bridges in this town means that they are dry-set in some cases, or they may not have been fully engineered at the time that they were built. They were engineered by, you know, a farmer with a bunch of rocks and a carriage, that, you know, to, to replace the stuff, the way it's been built, can be really expensive. So, you know, kudos again to Mr. Kunda for getting us a small bridge grant, so the Cedar Street Bridge is mostly taken care of out of the grant fund. But we have an impending, you know, bridge difficulty, a culvert difficulty on Depot Street that, you know, and you kind of say, gosh, you know, for the number of cars that are going to travel that far up Depot Street and cross, to do what? To get to the SNAP, maybe, to get to railroad street? But if you live up there, it's everything. It's the whole deal, and you count on your town to fix it. So if, even if it's expensive, we still have to ante up and find a way to do it. And since we already used our small bridge grant eligibility, we'll have to take another whack at that. But the engineering report on that should be in this week. They're up there, pulled together a lot of assessments and trying to figure out how much that's going to cost, but that's a consideration. The good news for people who are agitated about paving is that it is a priority, and we're trying to line up the funding, and our free cash picture is much better than it's been in past years, and so there needs to be some discipline in how it's put out. You don't want to spend it all at once and then lose your program. But, you know, at the moment, we're all kind of waiting with bated breath, because everything has either become scarce, or more expensive, or a combination of the two, and pavement is part of it. So we're going to keep our powder dry and make sure we strike a bargain when it makes the most sense to. But there's, there's not a week goes by when we don't think about, you know, what we want to do next. I will say that the pavement management plan, when it comes to crack ceiling, has been implemented to the nines. So that actually has been a lot of crack ceiling down in town, and it's kind of a fast in-and-out thing, and maybe some people miss it. But we've, we've stabilized some of our better roads for the long term by doing the smart thing, which is very cost-effective.
You know, when they're there, the guy with the, looks like a flamethrower is out there.
Yeah, exactly. In terms of the other projects, the social center, the adult social center, asbestos remediation is completed. It was a pretty quick job, there's tiles on the floor. It's fascinating, we have multiple layers of flooring underneath all that. Some of it's beautiful period wood floors. Why people cover that, I'll never understand why people did that, but they're a little bit past being restored, obviously. At this point, we just want to be safe. There may be a necessity to put a subfloor in, to get a nice level surface for the new floor to go on. And if you've tried to buy a sheet of plywood lately, I'm looking at Mike, because I get the daily price update, is it still $37, or is it more now?
It's much more than that.
Forty-nine the other night.
Forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Depends on which one you get. Subfloor's up around 90.
So at 80 sheets-
Not a good time to bullshit.
Cost prohibitive.
Yeah. But if we need 80 sheets for that job, that's a $72 increase in the cost.
The good, the good news on that particular project is the asbestos wasn't as widespread as you anticipated.
Right. So we might have room in the budget, but we may have to look at the contract and work that out with the vendor.
And the description.
Yeah.
Somebody around the corner there.
Yeah.
Quick circle back to the culvert on Depot, is that a repair or a replacement? What do we know?
That's what I don't know yet. It looks pretty grim.
Yeah.
That's a substantial failure.
Yeah. Yeah, it looks pretty grim. Other buildings, we're getting ready for the painting project that the, I'm going to call it the Old Town Hall, it's actually the, what is it called? The Grand Army of the Republic Hall, right? We're just waiting for the contractor to get a bond, so. I think that's pretty much all that immediately comes to mind. Town meeting's actions will set into motion those different capital projects. We obviously can't go out and solicit bids until the turn of the fiscal year and the funds can actually be released, but we're going to prepare all the documents in anticipation of that. I just want to make sure I fully answer the question from town meetings. I'm not entirely sure the resident who asked was aware that there was already money set aside for the generator, and that town meeting was approving additional funds.
Oh, so any from U Street?
The two things together are $350,000, which should be more than sufficient for the project. We're hoping right now that it would.
Adam was pretty confident, wondering what the process of capital.
So we, what I wanted to do with that, though, is we're going to do design first. We'll get a design professional to really spec this out. I don't, we're not qualified around here to write a detailed spec for a generator install, so we'll have the, an engineer, an electrical engineer specify that, and it'll be put out to bid on the basis of a professional spec. Obviously, we'll go over it with legal counsel for procurement items, make sure that nothing proprietary is spec, et cetera, et cetera. That and the truck for fire slash highway-
Slash facilities.
Slash facilities. That's going to be purchased on a statewide contract at the prices that have been achieved by the state, so we can have a conversation with the vendor on that one.
Do you know what manufacturer you're thinking of? Like, whether it's going to be a GM or a Ford or whatever? And the only reason I ask that is there's an issue with Ford's right now, because they can't get some stupid chip.
The chip, yes.
So there's-
I think all car makers.
I don't know that-
Not mine.
I'm pretty sure the statewide contract is with Minuteman, so I'm pretty sure it's a Ford.
Yeah, Ford, Minuteman's Ford.
I'm a child. I'm paying more attention to which part's going to be orange, which part's going to be red. I'm just fascinated by how this is going to be achieved. I've suggested zebra and tie dye, nobody likes that, but-
Urban camo.
Urban camo, that'll really fly. But it is going to serve cross purposes.
Yeah.
So that's my update, Mr. Chairman.
Feynman will want to paint it red.
They could do yellow.
Yellow.
Yep, they're on yellow.
And that would cover both.
Florida had a lot of-
My money's on red.
Paint the frame red.
I had heard through the grapevine that there's a problem with the bridge at Wollam Lake Road. Have you heard that?
So, that's one of those dry-set bridges, right? And it's Wollam Lake Road, and it goes over the Southern New England Truck Line Trail to underneath it. And Mr. Kunda commented and asked the engineer to review the situation there, because there's been some subsidence of the asphalt on top of it, in the middle, not on, in the edges you expect it. And you walk underneath the thing, I walk up there quite a bit, so, in the winter, there were some icicles, you know, there's a couple of stones that have dislodged from the base of the thing. Yet we are assured by Mass DOT that all they really need to do is come and grind and pave. You know, I don't want to spend all day fighting with engineers, I'm not an engineer, right? So if Mohammed says it's safe to go over, I believe him. But we're going to watch it very carefully, even after they do the work, because there are some elements that are pretty far down the maintenance scale, rating scale. It's not an imminent danger of collapse, none of that is true, but, you know, there's some pretty significant cracks and changes to the gaps between the stones. It needs to be monitored carefully.
Did we get that, that it only needs a shape and pave? Is that in writing?
Yes, it is.
Good, I like that.
And filed in a location where many people can find it if they need to.
Good.
But that was an interaction that Mr. Furno and I had with, with the master engineer.
Okay. All right. So, are there any other open session topics? Okay. All right. So are there any other open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seeing is none. And as we're all meeting in person now, and the state of emergency is ending, can I ask that this standing agenda item please be removed from future agendas?
Which one?
Open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting.
I thought that just replaced all the new business.
I thought it did, too.
Just trips off the tongue very nicely, though.
And I wasn't had to confirm or deny.
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to take it off.
Would you like it to go back to old business?
No, I don't think, I think they, the Secretary of State or someone changed that, maybe the AG. So I think you just keep it there. It gives us the flexibility, because a lot of Dave's great ideas come while he's driving here.
Very true.
And you can't anticipate that.
If I ever have another great idea, that's probably my strike.
Put it to discuss later. How's that?
All right. So if you're looking for one of Kim's famous motions.
All right. And make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of three things: litigation, interest in real property, and investigations, and to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
I enthusiastically second that motion.
Yes, the enthusiasm is dripping off of you.
Yeah, I can tell. That was by intention.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
I thought you didn't like them.
You have to do a roll call vote for that.
Mike Fitzpatrick, aye.
Bone and aye.
Dave, a s'y.
Because aye.
Moore, a s'y.